Is that not where you were there?
I'm usually right into there, yeah.
It seems like this is a lot more critical.
I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission on March 17th, 2021. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, is available at the front of the chambers with the clerk. The Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. In order to meet the required social distancing protocols, we must limit the number of people inside the chambers to those seats that are numbered in the chambers. Staff is assisting individuals who are present and wish to testify on items on today's agenda by ensuring that each person has signed in. Based on estimations, we are staggering the times of various hearings. These times are identified in parentheses on the agenda. We are encouraging attendees to arrive no more than 15 minutes before their scheduled hearing. Please note that an agenda item will not begin before the time posted. In the event that the allocated hearing times go quicker than estimated, there will be breaks in the hearing. If you parked in the parking garage across the street to the north, the gate is open and no parking coupons are needed. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, commissioners and the staff, cellular phone usage is not permitted in these chambers during any portion of this meeting. We appreciate your cooperation. Please note, the planning commission action today is final on the following agenda items: 1.3 Special Permit 1327B, 1.4 21008, and 4.2 County Special Permit 21005. Any aggrieved person may appeal final action of the planning commission to the city council or the county board by filing a notice of appeal with the clerk within 14 days following the action of the planning commission. The planning commission action on all other items is a recommendation to the city council or county board. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held March 3rd, 2021.
So move Campbell.
Second Finnegan.
Jerry?
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Raymond Yost?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Corr?
Yes.
Motion carried, eight to zero.
The next item of business is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be called at the same time and will not be scheduled for a separate public hearing unless there is a request from someone wishing to speak or at the request of a commission member. I will ask Jerry to read all the consent agenda items into the record. Once those items are read, she will ask if there is anyone wishing to speak. If you wish to speak on an item not on the, I'm sorry, on the consent agenda, we would ask that you stand and state that item. That item will then be removed from the consent agenda and scheduled as a separate public hearing under Section 3 of today's agenda. All items remaining on the consent agenda will be voted upon in total with a motion for approval. Jerry, will you please call the items on the consent agenda?
Yes, before I do that, I would just note that Commissioner Shear has declared a conflict of interest on item 1.7, Street and Alley Vacation 21001, and will be abstaining from any action related to Special Permit 21010, and he will recuse himself at this point. In addition, I would note that item 1.8, which is waiver 21002, has been withdrawn by the applicant, and so no further action will be taken on that matter. Okay, on to the consent agenda. Item 1.1 is Comprehensive Plan Conformance 21005 to amend the City of Lincoln's Six-Year Capital Improvement Program for fiscal year 2020 to 2021 and to 2025/2026 to centralized Aging Partners Facilities on the Veterans Affairs Campus on property generally located at 600 South 70th Street. Item 1.2 is Special Permit 450S to allow Madonna Rehabilitation Hospital to amend their campus signage plan for new signage to include electronic changeable copy signage with frontyard setback reduction for signage on property generally located at 5401 South Street. Item 1.3 is Special Permit 1327B to allow for the, an additional 18-hole mini golf course and for the sale of alcohol for consumption on the premises, property generally located at 5901 South 56th Street. This is final action on this item unless appealed to the city council within 14 days. Item 1.4 is Special Permit 21008 to allow for the sale of alcohol for consumption both on and off the premises on property generally located at 1433 Dahlberg Drive. Again, this is final action on this item unless appealed to the city council within 14 days. Item 1.5 is Special Permit 10, or 21010 to allow for an AG Agricultural District Community Unit Plan on property generally located at 51 South 98th Street. Item 1.6 is Text Amendment 21001 to amend Title 27, Chapter 27.69.260 regarding signage regulations pertaining to non-residential health care facilities to allow for electronic changeable copy signs and repealing section, or said section of the Lincoln Municipal Code as hitherto currently existing. Item 1.7 is Street and Alley Vacation 21001 to vacate portions of right-of-way along T Street, R Street, and associated with the alleys east of 36th Street. And again, item 1.8 has been withdrawn. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on these items?
I don't see any.
Are there any ex parte communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting these sites?
I don't think we have any of those either.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak on any of these consent agenda items? If so, please stand and state that item.
Okay.
Olivia?
Okay, 1327B, item 1.2.
Item 1.3, you want to take that off for public hearing?
Uh, sorry, I may not have the time. I'm just here to speak on that.
Are you the applicant?
Yes.
So I don't, you don't have to speak if you don't want to.
I was here to answer questions and I guess give it to them.
Steve, do you want to?
I don't think commissioners have questions.
I would move approval of the consent agenda.
Second Joy.
Jerry?
Okay, this is for the approval of the consent agenda. Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Raymond Yost?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Corr?
Yes.
Motion carried, nine to zero.
Good.
There are no requests for deferral, so we will now proceed to public hearings. The staff, oh.
We'll have someone go get Dennis.
Yeah. Yeah.
But I was just gonna say, it'd be, it might be watching.
I don't know if there's a monitor back there or not.
We will now proceed to public hearings. The staff will make a brief presentation. The applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony, and then the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. Each person testifying should state their name and address, and shall have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The timer will go off after four minutes. The clerk will then indicate you have one minute remaining to wrap up your testimony. Once the final minute has lapsed, the clerk will indicate that your time is up. If during your testimony you have copies of documents or materials you would like distributed to the planning commission members and/or included as part of the record, please place the information in the folder on the podium. The planning commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or continue the public hearing. Jerry, will you please call the first public hearing item?
Yes, item 4.1 is Change of Zone 05061D to amend the Southwest Village Planned Unit Development for approval of a development plan which proposes modifications to the zoning and subdivision ordinances, along with revisions to the land uses, site plans, grading and draining plans, development plan, and other sheets, including adding a casino as a permitted use on property generally located at South First Street and West Denton Road. Staff recommendation is conditional approval. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed?
I don't think so.
Are there any ex parte communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting the site?
All right, Steve?
Steve Hendrickson with the Planning Department. We'll get up on the screen here off the laptop in a moment. This is a change of zone to an existing PUD, so it's already zoned B2, so it's really just an amendment to the existing PUD for the Southwest Village, which actually includes all four corners here, along West Denton Road, just west of Highway 77 at South Folsom, and also along First Street. This PUD's been approved for over 10 years. It was initially envisioned as a very large commercial center. It was approved for 1.3 million square feet of space, plus 250 hotel rooms, was viewed as being a mixed-use center. A lot of the road improvements were done at that point, and then along came 2008, just shortly after this was approved, and with the Great Recession at that time, a lot of the commercial interest went away. And so it's been kind of quiet, except for the horse track and gaming facility that was already on the site, and so now this is coming back in front of you now that casino gambling has been approved, and the applicant can talk a little bit more about their proposal. But before we get to the part on the south side, would note that overall, the PUD is being reduced in the amount of commercial space from 1.3 million square feet to 980,000 square feet. There are a few more hotel rooms, from 250 to 650 hotel rooms, and we're looking at having more of a mix of uses. It goes from 400 some dwelling units to now 700 dwelling units. There are some waivers associated with those dwelling units, asking for the height to go up to 55 feet for residential use, which is very comparable from what we've seen of a lot of apartment complexes. We've probably had O-10 or more in the past five or six years that have asked for that kind of a height. And all of this commercial area really isn't adjacent to any existing housing. The acreages that are here are across South Folsom Street to the west. So didn't want to lose track of the fact that there is some changes going on on the north side. That's mostly allowing for more flexibility with more residential, less commercial. There was a traffic study that was submitted for the development as a whole, and it was reviewed by LTU. Based on that traffic study, we don't think there is a need to have four lanes of traffic between South Folsom and First Street. That's set up for that to be done somewhere in the future, but that will not be done as a part of this opening of the casino and the associated hotel. There were some improvements that were identified. Specifically, we're going to be adding a right-hand turn lane in West Denton going on to South Folsom, a traffic signal at the intersection of First Street and West Denton, which would be the main way people would be turning to go into the casino. There'll be some improvements done by the developer on the south side to First Street itself, including two roundabouts to make it easier for people to get out onto the site, as well as that it would also include perhaps some traffic signal modifications at Highway 77 in West Denton. Those have all been worked out with casino developer, and there'll be an amendment to the existing annexation agreement that would go along with the change of zone onto the city council. So from a city viewpoint, we think all of the necessary transportation improvements have been handled. And then really only the other last waiver that we have here is that they had shown a package of wall signs for the casino and for the hotel. We reviewed those, and we think they are all going to match our existing regulations, but there's a little uncertainty because it's additional in the design. Some of them are on the edge of the roof and the wall, and so they're wall signs, so they're roof signs. So there's a waiver included in here that when the final design is done, the planning director can approve the signs, basically as shown in your packet, and will determine at that sign exact, time what exactly they are. There's also a sign waiver that is basically a hotel, a casino, with having two frontages on arterial streets. They could have had four freestanding signs. Instead, they're going to take the area of all of those signs and do just one sign. So it'll be a larger sign in that sense, and it will have electronic changeable copy on it, but cumulatively, it won't have any more sign area or electronic changeable copy sign area than each of the four signs individually. So we thought that was a good compromise between having a huge sign plus a lot of other signs with it. It really puts it all on one sign, and that was the other basic sign waiver that went through with it. So that's a quick, broad overview of the proposal. I can answer any other questions. Otherwise, the applicant will be here, and we'll get into more specifics then about the casino proposal itself.
Dick?
Steve, as I was looking at the plan for West Denton Road, it appears that on West Denton, there's also a left turn lane to go in from West Denton. Is that correct?
There'll be, in the future, there'll be a South Folsom Street way off to the west, but that would be more of an entrance into potential residential development to the west, as well as on their site plan, there's the barns that would be associated with the horse track. At First Street in West Denton, yes, there would be a left turn to allow people to turn onto First Street and then go into one of the two entrances for the casino. One goes directly into the main entrance of the casino and then the garage, or you could go to the second one and go directly into the parking garage.
Got it. Thank you.
Steve, I know that this is a, you know, a PUD, and so we have, you know, different zoning classifications within that, but I was just a little, you know, a lot of times we don't like to put industrial zoning next to residential zoning, and I know that it's kind of off to the side, or, you know, separated by, you know, that street. Can you talk a little bit about, and maybe the applicant will have to answer this, like, what they're planning on putting in an industrial area, or why it's classified as industrial?
Sure. So if I can go back to the laptop here, there are basically four corners here, let's talk about at First and West Denton Road. To the south, with the casino and the horse track, there are no dwelling units now shown on the south side. On the north side, there is yet the potential for dwelling units as well as for commercial space. It's only in this one corner here identified in red that it was initially thought of as I-3 employment center, so it does allow for potentially industrial uses, and that was part of the original plan. That property owner, part of what we also have here is there's now five different property owners. There's not a single developer. That property owner hasn't expressed any interest in changing their plan. So that lot is not assigned any dwelling units, but it does have the potential that it could have some type of light industrial use. We think it's quite likely that, given its location between the casino and Highway 77 with high visibility, it is actually a more likely site for fast food restaurants, convenience stores, maybe another hotel. It is allowed to have a hotel on that site, so we view it as less likely that that will occur. Plus, any dwelling units that would occur would be on the other side then of West Denton Road. The West Denton, Highway 77 right-of-way there is nearly 200 feet wide, and the discussion has been that the frontage along West Denton would really probably be commercial uses. So we think there would be easily well over 300 feet, our normal separation that we like to see between industrial and residential. So in case we got any industrial, light industrial uses on the southwest corner, we think there should be the spacing for it, but however, given the casino opening, that's kind of the prime site you would probably see for commercial uses in the long term once that casino opens.
And so having a hotel, I mean, it's kind of residential nature, but I know that we really classify it more as commercial. It's not a concern to have hotel rooms next to an industrial use.
Typically, we haven't had that as one of the items that is eliminated. The thought is, is that people who are in the hotel are travelers, they have a car, they're much easier to get out if there was some kind of an emergency with that.
The other thing is, can you show me on the map where the trail is supposed to be going?
Sure. Let's see if I switched my view here. So I'll pop it off. So here is the future trail network. That is visible at all. Basically, what it is, is that the trail today goes across Dunsborough Park, crosses the first of the railroad tracks, but doesn't go any further. We view that extension of the trail then as to someday going over Highway 77. There's certainly a large cost involved with that, or finding a way with a drainage way to go underneath, and then continuing along the drainage way. So it would be south of, I'll switch back now to the aerial, so it would be on the south side of the racetrack, south of the barns, and they show a trail easement on their plan, and then potentially, we might have a trail coming along South Folsom, and then they would continue, that trail would continue west. It's likely we would probably someday start with the trail over here, but the connection across Highway 77 will be a major expense possibly at someday in the future. But at least we will have that trail easement preserved. The trail construction is typically done by the city, not but done by the property owners, because it is a community benefit.
Great, thank you. Okay, I think we're ready for the applicant.
Andrew Willis, 233 South 13th Street, Suite 1900, on behalf of the applicant. We have a pretty good overview of the proposed amendment to the PUD. Really, it was initiated with the ability to create or develop the casino near the racetrack based on the constitutional amendment, and then really, it became a looking, looking at the entire PUD and the, really, what has changed in the anticipated land uses based on change over time. So as mentioned, really, this, it ultimately is a reduction in commercial, even though we now have a new casino use. In the big picture, there's a reduction of commercial uses, more dwelling units, and then obviously, the main piece here being the casino. So that casino complex is going to have approximately 1,210 gaming stations, restaurant, event space, kind of a typical, what you'd expect as the overall casino complex. Based on, based on the traffic study, and really, this would, we'd see all that traffic coming, we anticipate it really, from 77 down South First Street. You're going to have your main entrance on South First Street, and then the roundabout at a quarter mile, really, I mean, that's going to take all the traffic to South First from the casino, and that development. So that's, that's really the primary focus from an infrastructure standpoint, and as mentioned, that will be, it's all being worked out, and will be addressed in the amendment to the annexation agreement, which deals with the infrastructure right now anyway. We really, you know, all the conditions from planning, we agree with, and it all looked good, and we're all, we support all those conditions, and then I think I'm here to, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions? I was, can you talk a little bit about, I was just surprised, like, I would expect more commercial with this kind of a building or use going in, so I was surprised to see more dwelling units instead of commercial. Can you talk to that a little bit?
Yeah, there's, I mean, the reduction is really, I mean, it'd be 980,000 square feet commercial, and that counts the casino as well. So there's, you know, it's anticipated there will still be some commercial probably on that frontage along West Denton, but then really, I think initially, they, the plan, whatever, how many, 2005-ish was big box, looking at something like that. That's, that use has just went away. It's just not coming. So while there's a reduction in commercial, there still is, I mean, there still is 980,000 square feet total commercial, so I think you'll see, or I would, I would, I would guess that, you know, that West Denton still looks commercial, although I don't know, because again, there are, each of these parcels now has a different owner, and we've, and part of what we've done is, the land uses that were approved haven't real, well, they've changed, as we talked about, the reduction in commercial, some additional residential, and what, everything to the north was previously identified as one B2 unit, and, and outside of the PUD, you know, as a coalition agreement, these were all allocated out. So those, those uses have now been really allocated per parcel, simplifies, it makes more sense from the, from the overall city's perspective, but those uses haven't changed from what was expected, I guess, in that sense, and I don't know what will come on those lots, because I don't represent those owners to the north. However, I, yeah, I do think we can, you could say, I would say, you'd anticipate quite a bit of commercial then, because we still have 980,000 square feet, and then, but it just has, it's just turned out to look like more multifamily and residential's going into that area.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions right now? Okay.
Thank you.
Testimony and support.
Good afternoon. Lynn McNally, Executive Vice President of Nebraska Horsemen. We're the property owner, and I'm also the construction coordinator for the Lincoln and Omaha Casinos. So if you've got any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them. I will tell you that I've spoken with almost every property owner in the surrounding area, and I do think that the look of that area is going to be different than probably what you had originally envisioned back when Walmart was looking at the site out there. I do think that we're going to have very cooperative and conducive uses to the north as well as to the west. So I think it's going to be something that overall, I think you as a planning commissioner are going to be very pleased with. I do appreciate Steve and the rest of the planning department working with us. We're on an impossible timeline here to try and get things built so that we can start returning money back to you, the property taxpayers. So if I can answer any questions, I'm very happy to do so.
Do you anticipate any office space going into the casino?
In the casino itself, no. We're going to have spa services there. We did make an accommodation for further hotel rooms. If those are necessary in the future, we might be coming back for that. But the casino and the gaming floor and the amenities, we're going to have several restaurants on the site, that kind of thing. That's going to take up every square inch we've got. So we do anticipate having between 500 and 600 new employees at this site, so we're hoping that people will take advantage of the opportunity to maybe put in multifamily housing or something like that, because we're definitely going to need it for those new workers coming into the community. So we're really hoping that happens. I did hear that there are some convenience grocery store-type establishments that are interested in going into this area. I would also hope that they would do that, because we're going to be in need of those kinds of services for our workers and the rest of the employees in their surrounding area. So we're really hoping that that develops as well.
Great. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Any other testimony in support of this application? Okay, any testimony in opposition? All right. Any further staff questions?
No.
No? No? Applicant, do you have anything else you want to add? Okay.
I'll move, we close public hearing.
Second, Joy.
Jerry.
Ball.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Edgerton.
Yes.
Finnegan.
Yes.
Joy.
Yes.
Raymond Yost.
Yes.
Shear.
Yes.
Beckius.
Yes.
Cor.
Yes.
Motion carried, nine to zero.
I move approval of change of zone 05061D.
Second, Campbell.
Discussion.
I would just like to, I, I find that the proposal fits well within the general land use, both on this site and the surrounding sites. The, the change of commercial square footage, I, I, I find to be fine and in conformance with the general site plan and site area. And I find the change of zone to be compatible with surrounding land and use as well. I would just like to take a moment to thank Lynn and her group to, for building what I think will be a first-class, full experience, gaming experience here in Lincoln, inclusive of hotel and services. I think that will really be an asset to our community. So thank you, Lynn, for that. We appreciate it. I'll vote in support.
Any other comments? Dick.
I would just also echo what Thomas said. I think this is a great addition in the southwest part of our city and, and is going to be an economic engine in that area to create a lot of other opportunities. So I will be in support of this also.
Okay, Jerry, go ahead.
Okay. Ball.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Edgerton.
Yes.
Finnegan.
Yes.
Joy.
Yes.
Raymond Yost.
Yes.
Shear.
Yes.
Beckius.
Yes.
Cor.
Yes.
Motion carried, nine to zero. Right at 130, so I will go ahead and call the next item. Item 4.2, a special permit 21005 to allow for an event venue on property generally located at 22500 South 176th Street. This is final action on this item unless appealed to the county board within 14 days. Staff recommendation is for conditional approval. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed?
I don't see any.
Are there any ex parte communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting the site?
No, okay. Steve.
Okay. Steve Hendrickson with the Planning Department. So this next application is under the county zoning regulations. And this is specifically for a special permit for an expanded home occupation. We've had these for a variety of uses, including cabinet shops and outdoor storage. But we've also had a few that have been for this type of a use, which is for an event space, most typically a, a wedding reception area, or could be used for other parties or occasions. For, and we included in our staff report, the two other expanded home occupations have been for this use, plus a historic preservation special permit. All of those were ones that were on paved roads. This is actually, I go back over to our, our map here. We're actually on South 176th Street, south of Panama Road. So we're way out in the southeast part of the county, just a little over a mile away from Panama. But the, so while this property is on a dirt road, it was reviewed by the county engineer, and the county engineer did not express any concerns about the traffic. This is a request for use only on Fridays and Saturdays, but for up to 400 persons. As the staff report notes, some of the other home occupations for wedding venues, event spaces, have been more controversial, often because of the fact that they had a lot of other dwelling units that were around them, that were concerned about noise and traffic and the impacts potentially of the, of the venue itself. As you can see from the air photo, there is not anyone particularly nearby. There's about three dwelling units or so in the larger area around this. But we have not had anyone express any opposition in terms of, of letters, nor do we have anyone on, on Zoom. And as you can see today, we don't have anyone in opposition here today. We just have the applicant Courtney Distmeyer, who will speak in a moment. And so we thought that, given its location, looking at these case by case, certainly when there are adjacent property owners, some of the other applications have had limits on the number of events per month. The Hillside Events Center out on West Denton Road initially had a limit and actually came back before this group, and got that limit removed, because they'd had several years of, of successful operation. And when that limit was proposed to be removed, they, they didn't have anyone in opposition. As you can see by the air photo, they have already got started a little prematurely here on this site. So this special permit will then get everything in conformance. But so basically, it is using this one singular building known as the Shed. They live on the site. Courtney is actually a family member of the people who are living on the site and are part of the operation. There is a waiver that is included, that typically we're trying to limit this to two employees. And that's mostly to try to limit the scale while we have an expanded home occupations. The idea isn't that you're going to have 30 people on the site coming and going and lots of employees and traffic. That limit is there to try to keep it, where you can have some outside employees that is of a limited nature. Well, that's kind of hard to do when you have a 400-person wedding. And in, if you've been here long enough, you recall, the term is no longer used employed, because the property owners aren't really employing the caterer, the DJ, the disc jockey. But those people are yet coming onto the site to participate. So that's the term now used, participate on the site. And so we think that it's appropriate to allow up to 12 people. That should be plenty in terms of servers and food and drink and music and everything else. But since it's only Fridays and Saturdays, it's really quite comparable to having two employees on the site working there 40, 45 hours a week. So in terms of the number of hours, it's not that much. It's just all concentrated on potentially a Friday or a Saturday. This allows it throughout the year, even though, of course, during our winter seasons, it is probably less likely that that would occur. But we did lay out some conditions, and, and most of the conditions just relate to, this has a rather informal parking arrangement, and so we're trying to make sure that there's enough parking on the site. The main concern of the county is that we don't start getting people parking along 176th Street. And that also then goes to this area that's parking up front. There's a rather wide driveway there today. We all need to get a good portion of that removed, so the driveway gets down to more of a county standard. And a very clear 50-foot area there is another of the waivers. It's typically 200 feet, but they have this existing area where there could be some parking. So instead, we'd have a 50-foot green space, appropriate landscaping in there to also make it clear, don't park in this area and back out onto 176th. But beyond that 50 feet, then you could have the, the parking area back there. So the site plan will require that they show on their plan 200 stalls, so that we think that's adequate parking for a 400-person. Typically, for this kind of an event, people are not going there one-on-one. There's people, families coming together. So 200 stalls should be more than adequate for a 400-stall event. And then one of the last conditions on this is that they just make sure prior to operating that they've worked with building safety to meet all of the building codes for switching a agricultural building into a building that could safely then house up to 400 people. So with the conditions as proposed, we are recommending approval and be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Dick.
Steve, how'd you come up with the number of 12?
A good question. We were simply looking at that 80 hours a week is typically two employees. And then we started looking in our novice experience of, okay, if you have a 400-person wedding, we wanted to make sure that there was enough. So we were looking at between the, the food vendors and servers, disc jockeys, some people who are participating on the site come and leave. And so that was our approximation, that 12 allowed for the large wedding, and you could still have an adequate number of servers, one disc jockey, that type of thing. And that 12, being there on-site both Friday and Saturday for maybe four to five hours each, that was probably in the neighborhood of around 90 hours potentially of people participating on the site, which is in the ballpark of if you had two employees working full-time on-site.
Okay.
Steve, I noticed in the conditions, I think it was, it talks about lighting standards, and they just reference the city standards. I assume that's because we don't really have standards in the county for lighting.
That is correct. And basically, what we're trying to do is to get the light trespass down to nearly zero at the property line. So it allows adequate lighting of parking areas, but that it doesn't, you know, if someday there's a house across the street, because they have the right to build a house across the street, that you're not so bright that the light is actually falling onto their property.
And then I noticed also there's some required screening. Can that be used to help shorten that driveway?
Yes, so, so along the, the parking area here, the screening would help provide, here's an area so that people don't back directly out. There'd also be some screening potentially required for parking areas they might have on the south side of the site as well. Because it's both visually screening, if someday there's a residential use across the street, or screening the parking from people driving up and down 176th Street. But on the north side, it also helps create a, a definite barrier, because otherwise people might, if they just see grass, and people are parking on the grass, think it's okay to continue to stack here and to back up into the 176th Street. So that, that's the main public concern, is that we don't really want to have cars backing up who, as, as more and more people come, they're not exactly sure where they're supposed to park, so they start parking, you know, where they see other cars parking, and they get too close to the street.
I also noticed that there was a comment about, you know, the parking, and I, I assume this is operating currently as a farm, you know, they have implements coming and going. Do those farm implements or those machinery things, do those count towards the auto truck storage limits? I think that was for...
No, so anything regarding the farm operation is not really subject to this special permit. So they could have 10 farm trucks parked on the site. The truck parking is more really associated with, if somebody was having an expanded home occupation for, let's say, auto repair, and they were having five or six big vehicles for that, it's trying to say, well, that's, we're still trying to keep it as to a home occupation and not have a lot of vehicles associated with that home occupation of the larger type.
Great, I just wanted to clarify that one.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
One other question, more of on condition A for onsite sales. What was the thinking behind that limitation?
That is a limitation that is in all of the other special permits of this type as well. It is basically, if you're going to be selling alcohol on the site, you need to get what's typically called an SDL, a license to allow you to sell alcohol on this site. And so that has separate review, so that we don't have to have, they don't necessarily have to get a liquor license themselves, and typically, this type of operation would not. They rely on, you're going to go to X liquor store, they're going to cater the event, and then they get the license.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff right now? Okay, thank you. Applicant.
My name is Courtney Distmeyer with the Shed located at 22500 South 176th Street, Adams, Nebraska, 68301. I am requesting a home occupation, a home occupation special permit to be able to host weddings at this property. Sitting on about 80 acres of land, our closest neighbor is about a quarter of a mile away. We respect our neighbors and definitely the joys of being in the country, and definitely keep this in mind at every event. We have gathered signatures from all of our neighbors stating they have no problems with the permit moving forward. Also want to sincerely apologize to the planning commission for not obtaining this permit before we started doing events. That's it.
Tom.
I just have one question for you.
Yeah, of course.
I've been to many weddings at venues such as this, and they are typically a little less formal. The, the reason that I ask is the limit of 12 outside participants onsite, you know, catering staff, DJs, so on, are you okay with that number? The only reason I ask is because if we, maybe we're going to have a plated dinner, I don't, for 400 people, I don't know that 12 would be enough for you, but as long as you're okay with it, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I think 12 should be plenty. We never had someone do a plated dinner. So yeah, I think it should be totally fine.
Okay, very good, as long as you're good with it. Perfect. Thank you.
That was my question.
My question too, so.
Yeah. If you're good, I'm good. Thank you.
Um, do you have any, so I think right now, your parking area is mostly like grass or, you know, gravel-type situations. You're okay with getting some stalls paved for the handicap parking?
Um, so, I don't know if there's a picture of it, but right in front of the Shed building, there's actually like 20 feet of concrete that we would put handicap stalls right up there. And the entrance is right on the other side, so it'd be perfect.
Okay. Um, and so I know that you've already had some events, your neighbors don't have any problems, they're...
Nope. Like I said, I've got signatures, especially the one closest by on that same road. They said we don't have any problems.
And I assume that they knew that this was going on, so...
Yep, they did. Surprise, no complaints, but yeah.
Okay, that's good. That's good that they're, that they're supportive of your business venture here. Do you have any signs? I mean, how do people find your property when there's an event out there?
We actually have just a shuttle bus that we park, kind of in the parking lot, kind of separating on that big drive, the 20-foot, I don't know how big it is, but on the wide opening space, we have a shuttle bus that has a sign, the Shed, so people can see.
Okay. And do you anticipate ever putting up any signs or anything like that?
Right now, we're just trying to get everything squared away legally, but maybe in the future. We haven't really discussed that, I guess.
Okay. Um, I noticed that the Health Department did have a concern about, right now, that building is maybe being used for servicing some, some vehicles and, during the week. And how do you keep that separate from then, when you have an event and have food and stuff in there?
Um, yeah, so the only service we do on farm equipment is basically just mechanical work. We don't have any chemicals or anything like that. And we actually have a very hot power washer that gets all the floors nice and clean before events and wipe everything down.
I think that's all of my questions. Dick has one.
Do you have someplace that you take all the farm equipment when you're going to have an event?
Yes, we actually do, yeah.
It opens up for parking?
Yes, most definitely, yeah.
Great. Okay, thank you for coming today. Testimony and support. Don't everyone beat a path? Testimony in opposition. Any further staff questions? Okay.
I'd move to close the public hearing.
Second, Edgerton. Okay. Jerry.
Ball.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Edgerton.
Yes.
Finnegan.
Yes.
Joy.
Yes.
Raymond Yost.
Yes.
Shear.
Yes.
Beckius.
Yes.
Cor.
Yes.
Motion carried, nine to zero.
I would also move to approve special permit 21005.
Second, Finnegan.
Discussion. Um, I know that, you know, you're kind of doing this in reverse order, where you're getting, you know, the, the legal permission to hold your business and, and do everything. But we do appreciate that you've had communication with your neighbors and that there's no controversy that's huge for us. And so I just want to thank you that, even though you may not have done this avenue first, you obviously contacted them, which is another important first step, so thank you.
I also see this as an opportunity for, for another revenue source for the farming operation.
Yes.
So I strongly support it.
Yeah. Great, all right. Jerry.
Okay. Ball.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Edgerton.
So I strongly support it.
Yeah. Great, all right. Jerry?
Okay. Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Raymond Yost?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Corr?
Yes.
Motion carried, nine to zero.
And we're adjourned.